The eleven council members accounted for right now, when I say accounted for, they're either here in person or online. We do have two members of county council online, Mr. Somerville and Mr. Fluelling. We're waiting...
Paul's on too. There's one that is Paul's on.
I said, Mr. Somerville and Mr. Fluelling.
Okay, Lawson's there.
Lawson's here.
Yeah, he's here. Everybody's here. The only one we're missing is Mr. Hervishon right now. Okay, would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. If you wish to speak, please note that the microphone in front of you has a little red on it. You're going to have to press the button to turn it green so that your voice can be recorded. May I have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second, please.
Second. That was me.
Oh, Mr. McKellen. I'm looking at Mr. Cunningham like I heard him.
They sound that much alike.
Yes.
He's got his hand on my back.
Okay, duly motioned and seconded. The agenda will be approved without any objections, and I see no objections. Okay, we're ready to review the agenda of the county council meeting. I hope everybody has had a chance to take a look at it. It is rather short this evening, which means we'll be asking for someone to elongate the meeting, maybe.
Look at me. I'm just all modest.
Yes.
You're standing here by yourself.
Yes, I know. I know. Is there anyone who has a question about any item on tonight's agenda and the consent agenda? Especially the consent agenda, so we'll be able to approve that. Okay. Is there anything that council wishes to discuss before we go into the executive session? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion for executive items number seven and eight, which are pursuant to the South Carolina Code, Section 30-470A2, where we're going to discuss the purchase or sale of real property at 1407 King and 1600 Wilmington Street, and matters relating to attorney-client privilege, the scratch golf litigation. So may I have such a motion?
So move, sir.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion, and Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, are there any questions before we go into executive session? Seeing none, we will now go into executive session at 4:35. We're hoping that this is not going to take a very long time before we return.
Where are we going?
We're going to go across...
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. We have returned from executive session. There will be no items conducted out of executive session. Is there any-
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I'd like to have a floor for a second, please. I want to register objections to the previous executive session. Myself and Mr. Somerville were locked out. The audio was garbled and we were not able to talk, not able to hear very well. Quite frankly, it was a waste of my time. And when I started to register my complaint about the subject matter, which just for the record was not, in my opinion, subject to executive session privilege. In fact, if anybody at all wants to call me and find out what I heard, you're absolutely welcome to give me a call and I'll tell you what it was. And, you know, I really think what you should have done, Mr. Passman, as soon as you knew that I couldn't talk or that anybody else on remote, Mr. Somerville, were having trouble hearing and speaking, you should have adjourned that executive session until we had the right and privilege to exercise our duty to our constituents. It really was unfair. You could continue that executive session without us in attendance. And quite frankly, it was, it's a tragedy. I don't know how you think you, you're doing your job if you can't do that. Whatever else you talked about, I have no idea because I wasn't able to join meetings and participate in meetings. I think it should never be the matter of vote for county councils because you'll be forcing us to refuse ourselves.
Any-
If you can still hear me, I don't know.
I can still hear you. Is there any further action?
Well, let me comment. I do believe-
Turn your microphone on, please.
I do believe that what we talked about, and I realize maybe we're-
I don't want to know, I don't want to know anything about it.
No, no. I'm not saying, all I was saying was I believe that the subject matter did lend itself to executive session.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and talk about that in open session. What I heard was a development, redevelopment opportunity for housing in a piece of property owned in the northwest part of, in fact, downtown Beaufort. A piece of property that used to be owned, or that is owned by Beaufort County. But I didn't hear anything about selling the property. I heard about a redevelopment opportunity. That's all I heard.
Yeah, well, it's unfortunate that electronics didn't work, but I believe that it was contractual discussion that was appropriate to have. It's unfortunate about the electronics. I don't know what we can do about that type of thing.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, the caucus meeting is adjourned. We will come back for the council meeting at 6:00 P.M. Everyone, I'd like to call the county council meeting of Monday, April 25th, 2022, to order. Attendance has been taken. All 11 members are either present, nine of us, or online. The two members of county council online are council member Somerville and council member Flewelling. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And everyone will remain standing for minutes. As many of you know, April 22nd was Earth Day. In honor of that event and for your thoughts, I'm going to quote a Hindu prayer.
I'll do it directly.
Oh, sorry. Turn it off.
I'll start over. As many of you know, April 22nd was Earth Day. In honor of that event and for your thoughts, I'm going to quote a Hindu prayer. May the waters flow peacefully. May the herbs and plants grow peacefully. May all the divine powers bring unto us peace. May the rain come down in the proper time. May the earth yield plenty of corn. May the world be free from war. The supreme Lord is peace. Amen.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. May I have a member of council please make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Any questions? This will be done without objection, and I see no objections. Next is the approval of minutes of March the 14th. May I have a motion for those minutes, please?
A motion, Chairman.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Any questions regarding the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection. Next, we turn over to our administrator, Mr. Greenway, for his report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council, and the folks who are watching us on the county channel, and the folks who made the effort to come out this evening. I have one housekeeping item that I want to remind all the council members of before I get into this, is as you're speaking this evening, please make sure that you hit your mic button and turn the light on the bottom of the neck green so that we can pick you up. We're going to do our best job to keep pace with you all tonight as we have this discussion. The first thing on my list tonight before I get into recognizing our great employees is an update on Highway 278. We had a joint meeting with the town of Hilton Head Island Council on Thursday evening. That meeting, some folks said it was a stalemate. I didn't take it as that. I took it as some positive things coming out of that meeting. And we had a further follow-up meeting with Senator Tom Davis today after I had a call with Secretary Hall on Friday. And I just want to clarify some things about the end-to-end analysis that we're going There is nothing wrong with us waiting a little bit longer and doing additional study to gather as much quality data as we can possibly gather for the traffic situation and scenarios that might be impacted by the bridge improvements and the corridor improvements on Highway 278. So that's one of the benefits of the end-to-end analysis. In addition to that, it will allow us to bring in an additional independent consultant, our team of consultants, to evaluate the work that's been done, to evaluate the intersection operations, to evaluate the assumptions, and to potentially evaluate the growth modeling for traffic on the island to make sure, again, that that data set is as comprehensive as possible and is as effective as possible. In addition, it will allow folks who are interested in that aspect of it to have additional participation and involvement in doing the end-to-end analysis. And we're going to be working to reach out to get a list of firms' names and be reaching out to the folks that have been involved and suggested this end-to-end analysis to discuss those firms with them. I do want to tell you all again, because I must reiterate this a lot, this is a county project. It is not a DOT project. It is not a state project. It is not a Town of Hilton Head Island project. It is a Beaufort County project. We are responsible for making sure that we carry this forward. We're going to work with everyone involved and all the players and all the stakeholders and our partners of Town of Hilton Head Island, but this is a county project. As a result of this end-to-end analysis, I am also, and a delay that you're going to hear about in the future here with regards to a potentially delay in additional construction, is I'm going to immediately submit to Secretary Hall and the Department of Transportation what's called a design exception to go ahead and begin the process so that we can construct the signal at Windmill Harbor. I have traveled that corridor many times over the last several months going to meet with Town of Hilton Head Island, even though I know many of you all received a letter from the mayor saying that I have not communicated with them on various things. I have gone down there a lot. And invariably, when I travel that corridor, there are cars either trying to get into Windmill Harbor or trying to get out of Windmill Harbor. And they have to sit there, and they have to sit there, and sit there, and sit there. I think one of the council members today witnessed that. And Mr. Perry, whom you will hear from here shortly during comment, said that they had trouble today because they had to go do a U-turn around, and they encountered traffic and things like that. So, long story short, that's a long way to tell you that I'm going to go ahead and submit that design exception and instruct Jared Frelix to work with DOT for us to go ahead and put that signal in. It's been a long time coming. We've been asking Windmill Harbor to wait, telling them to wait, and I think the days for them to need to wait are over with, and I'm going to push that issue, just so you're aware of that. So, that's it. I'm going to pause briefly to see if any of our council members that represent Hilton Head Island or Windmill Harbor have anything they'd like to add to that discussion on the end-to-end analysis and the signalization.
Mr. Rodman.
Yes. Good summary. Two points. I think relative to the design exception, it is time. And I think what changed is up until now, DOT would not issue what's called a warrant for a traffic signal. They've now said, based in the project, they would issue a warrant for the traffic signal. So the only issue now is if they're willing to do a warrant two years from now, why wouldn't they be willing to do one yesterday? And I think you're on the right track to ask for that. I think the other thing I would say relative to the 278 portion of it, I think in conversations we've had with various people, and you look at the inflation surge that we have, some people suggesting that delays are on the order of a million dollars a week in terms of the project cost. So, I think the, I totally endorse what you're saying about what we want to do in response to the Hilton Head folks, but I think it has to be at the same time that the project itself can't be delayed. And everything I have seen would say you can do what you want to do in stony, a traffic standpoint, but that should not delay the pure bridge portion, which is the long lead time and where the real money's at risk. Thank you, Eric.
Comment I have is that we're trying to move forward as quickly as we can.
That's right. Sorry about that. We're trying to move forward as quickly as we can. We will be speaking with the town council members about moving forward. We know that there is a process called the NEPA process and the Fonzie process. There's all these acronyms. We must stay within the corridor that has been designated for the construction of this bridge. If, in fact, we go outside that corridor, that becomes very problematic for us, where we may be forced to literally start all over again. So that's something that we cannot do. Please continue.
Thank you very much. Lindsay, you want to come on up, join me? As I typically do, I'm going to introduce some county employees here to you and highlight what they do for the county as a part of our excellent team here that I get the benefit of serving every day as county administrator. This is Ms. Lindsay Malfress. She's a library specialist in library mobile services and outreach department for the library. She has been behind the wheel of the bookmobile for the south end of the county for three years. She was hired in June 2019. Of course, in her work as a library specialist on bookmobile south, she drives the bookmobile along the pre-determined route to stops in Bluffton and Hilton Head to deliver mobile library services to preschool centers, after-school locations, neighborhoods, and assisted living communities. Each day, she assists visitors to the bookmobile by checking out library materials, fulfilling their requests, registering new library card accounts. And at least once per month, Lindsay takes the bookmobile to participate in community festivals. Outside of work, she enjoys going to music festivals, spending time with her cat, Castle, and participating in theater production both onstage and backstage with the May River Theater Group. So let's give her a round of applause. Okay, all right. That's good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it so much. Appreciate your service. Thank you. Our other two employees that I'm going to introduce tonight are not here in person, so that's the reason I took her first. Library, two folks from the library tonight. We have Renee Jenkins. We have a photo of her. She's a library specialist. She has been with us for 35 years in total. Thirty-two years as a full-time library person and three years as a library paid shaver during her time in high school. In her work in technical services in Beaufort County Library, Renee does the processing of all the books, audiobooks, DVDs that land on shelves in our five libraries, our two bookmobiles, and the Beaufort District collection. Since she is responsible for receiving and unpacking each box of items that arrive, Renee is the first person in Beaufort County to see the items before they make it to the shelf or for checkout. Renee is known for her commitment to error-free quality work and takes great pride in all she does for the Beaufort County Library. I often wonder what it was like to be the first person to receive all the materials and get a look at those before anyone else gets to see them. Renee loves her family. She has a wife, a mother, and a grandmother who also loves her jobs, job, and listening to audiobooks on her daily drive, and get a load of this, it happens, we talk about it a lot, on her daily drive from her residence on Hilton Head Island to the Technical Services Office in the downtown Beaufort branch library. So she makes that drive every day from Hilton Head Island all the way into Beaufort. So let's give her a round of applause. Renee, I appreciate your service. Our final employee comes from our records management division, Melissa Mack. She is a records management technician. She has been with us a total of six years. Her role with records management department ultimately expands and enhances the county's use of a software program we call Application Extender. That is basically the archive for the county where we store lots of permits, lots of forms, lots of documents that we need to go and retrieve, and Melissa does that for us. Her ability to multitask produces a high volume of digitally archived records through the digitalization of both microfilm and microfiche. Her work provides both service and assistance to many departments within Beaufort County. She helps ensure that departments will have a useful and productive digital experience. And last but not least, she also assists with metering the mail and filling mail job requests. So, big responsibility there, and she loves to bake as her personal thing that she does not mind people knowing about her publicly. So let's give Melissa a round of applause as well. Once again, I always appreciate all of the employees that I work with. Everybody does a great job for us. We have a great team here in Beaufort County, and it's an honor for me to serve the citizens of Beaufort County, but also the employees of this county as well. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Greenway?
I do have one question, and I apologize for not asking it beforehand. It might be you or Jared. Do we have any update on the Transportation Advisory Committee? I know they were supposed to report to us coming up on the 29th. I had my individual that I recommended told me that they have three more meetings scheduled, so I was trying to figure out where we are with that, if you guys have any info, just so we're all aware. I know we were told to stay out of the committee and let them handle it until we get the report, so I just wanted to see.
Yeah, you all will receive a report next week from the chairman of that committee, Mr. Dean Moss, during the executive committee meeting. He'll give you a brief update on that. They are substantially completed with their work. There's just some few minor details they need to clean up over the next three weeks, and then we'll have something for you all to consider at the Politique Facilities meeting to recommend to council on moving that referendum forward.
Fantastic. Thank you.
One thing, in one of the committee meetings, there was a presentation on what some of the stuff this county's doing. You know, you're all aware, you hear about people where somebody steals their home and so on, and the county's doing some very interesting things. So at some point in time, I think that would be useful to bring back to full county so that everybody knows what's going on. But I think what you're doing is some neat things.
We'll line Mr. Butts up to do that next part of my administrator's report in the next council meeting. Thank you for bringing that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of a proclamation honoring Noah's Ark rescue. Mr. McKellen, would you do the honors of reading that proclamation?
I happen to be here and ready to do that. Thank you very much. Let me introduce to everyone here Jennifer Smith, who is representing Noah's Ark Rescue and will be receiving this proclamation this evening. So welcome. Happy to see you. This is a proclamation that states, "Whereas Noah's Ark Rescue is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that was incorporated April 23rd, 2009 in Okati, South Carolina, and whereas Noah's Ark Rescue supplies emergency medical surgical and rehabilitation to abused animals to provide a second chance for animals that otherwise would be humanely euthanized, and whereas Noah's Ark founder Jennifer Smith responds to Beaufort County Animal Campus for emergency needs for the homeless animals in Beaufort County, whereas the generosity of the Noah's Ark Rescue continues to enable Beaufort County Animal Campus to become a model for innovative lifesaving measures in animal shelters, and whereas the invaluable contributions for care provided by Noah's Ark through private donations and proceeds from their store, F E T C H, Fetch Market, located on Highway 170, which provides 100% of their profits towards Noah's Ark Rescue, and whereas a day of recognition presents an opportunity to highlight the actions Jennifer Smith of Noah's Ark Rescue and Fetch Market in the vital roles in assisting our animal services to provide positive outcomes for the animals in Beaufort County. And now, therefore, be it resolved, Beaufort County Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude to Jennifer Smith of Noah's Ark Rescue for her service to our community." So congratulations, and may I present to you this proclamation that you can take and hang proudly somewhere that someone will be able to see it.
And Noah's Ark Rescue.
That's exactly right. So, let's come from behind this so Phil can get a photo, and there you go.
Congratulations, and the microphone is yours if you'd like to say something, and please do.
I'm not one for saying much. They're all over there. They almost had to hogtie me to get me in here.
Okay.
I'll say something, please.
One thing is, we could not have done it without you, seriously. If y'all can imagine what she does with animals we can't save, the vets can't save. She has specialty vets all over. She takes animals from all over the United States, but she is persistent, passionate, and very personable. But I could not have done my job without her cell phone that I call constantly. So I appreciate you being there for all of us.
Okay, we're now at the portion called the citizen comments. We have a few people in the audience that would like to address the county council. The first one will be Louis Poindexter. Please, when you come up, make sure that the microphone is on green so that you can be recorded. Please be as brief as you can, because we have several people who wish to speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Louis Poindexter. I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Bluffton Fire District, and this letter was provided on behalf of the entire Board of Directors. I don't think I can get it in in three minutes, so I'm just going to sum it up real quick. Over the past five years, we have had considerable amount of capital projects using impact fees. And we've spent $3.2 million and another $800,000 on just one fire station. Added in with Hampton Hall, our Hampton Parkway, our new fire station, the Chichesee Area Fire Station, the Colton River Fire Station, Palmetto Bluff Fire Station, all this using $8.3 million in capital projects from our impact fee. Over the next five years, we're going to, probably will incur another $9 million in capital expenses paying for new three fire stations and associated equipment at the Oldfield Community, within the gates of Sun City, and also at the intersection of Buckwalter and Highway 46. If the impact fees are withdrawn from our budget, it's estimated, excuse me, that it's going to raise mileage rates by at least 2.5 mils to cover these costs. We do not stand alone. These same scenarios play out all across the county's unincorporated areas. Development keeps coming to our area and burdening our coffers to keep up with infrastructure demands. We understand the dilemma posed by the inability to reach consensus with the municipalities, the cities, and the towns on impact fees and that it's going to be fair for all, but totally eliminating impact fees will only pass on the cost to existing citizens who will now be required to pay for this infrastructure for new developments and give developers a free ride, and that's not a fair solution to the taxpayers. We urge you to keep existing fees in place while you continue to negotiate an equitable solution fair to all. After all, we don't elect our leaders just to give up and toss out problematic issues because somebody doesn't get their way. We elect you to hammer out the details, negotiate, and fix what's on the table. Thank you.
Charles Perry.
I think this is, is this working?
Yes.
Good. My name is Charles Perry. I am the chairman of the Traffic Committee at Windmill Harbor Association, and so I'd like to speak to you in that capacity, but also secondarily as a concerned citizen of Beaufort County who's maybe the only concerned citizen of Beaufort County who practiced environmental law for 45 years. I don't know, but it was a long time. There are a couple of things, obviously, we would like to thank, Eric, and we hope, we'd urge the council to move forward with the design exceptions. If there's anything that we can do to support that process, obviously, we will do that. And we sincerely hope that it will work, because it is a very dangerous situation for us as residents of Jenkins Island, but it's also a serious situation for every man, woman, and child that comes onto Hilton Head that doesn't fly or go in a boat, or come in a boat. So we are... So, we really hope that that can come to fruition. The second thing I would like to say is to second something that the chairman said, and that is with regard to the NEPA process. And it also, in some ways, applies to the study process. I know that you want to move forward with that, but the NEPA process is a very sensitive one, and if you vary from the environmental assessment that's already been done, you're going to have to restart that whole process, and you're going to have to move forward with it. And that's going to have a very, very detrimental effect on the viability of the 278 corridor project, and you just need to be, I can't emphasize enough how sensitive that is. The other thing I would say is, I'm happy to hear that we're going to move forward with the studies. I hope they can take place in a very rapid fashion, and that you can come to a conclusion, and that we don't do studies for studies' sake. What really worries me is what happened to the 278 safety project, as we called it, which was the project in which there were actually two stoplights that were involved. And that project failed because the estimate was lower than the bid price, and that was in a period of relatively calm inflation, and we're not, unfortunately, in a period of calm inflation or no inflation as that was. And so, it is, I can't emphasize enough that the council move forward with the project as quickly as you possibly can so that we're not put into a situation where the bid prices come in substantially over the estimate and the amount of money that's set aside for this. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kerrigan, do you wish to comment?
You had your turn. Sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe, I want to personally express our appreciation for all of the work that you guys have done, and ladies, with regard to 278. I know you spent years on this. I've been involved for years. I understand the frustration. You know, four years ago, the citizens of Beaufort County went to the poll, and they approved a one-cent sales tax at that referendum for this project, four years ago. That tells me that the majority, silent majority of people in Beaufort County approves the steps necessary to improve that corridor, 278 corridor, on Jenkins Island and Hilton Head Island. You know, we have reached a point, I think, four years later, where we're slowly but surely getting into what Stu Rodman referred to a while ago as paralysis by analysis. There is a silent majority that wants this project to get underway. There is a very vocal minority of folks out there that would like to postpone this project indefinitely until the point that we can't afford to do the darn thing. I mean, we're literally, there are people out there. I understand Tom Davis's need to do more research and to do more analysis. I've sat on some of these, you know, I was on the Oversight Committee and a couple of other things, but, you know, in reality, if we don't get on with this thing, there's a point out there where we're not going to be able to afford to do it, and that would be, I think, a disaster. Thank you.
Cindy Poulsen?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Cindy Poulsen. I'm president of the Windmill Harbor Properties Owners Association, and I agree with my colleagues here, Mike and Charlie. I just wanted to be real brief and thank Eric for supporting us. That would be a tremendous help to our safety issue, and also thank you to the councilmen for your continued support in alleviating our situation that is very risky for people coming on and going off the island. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, you wish to speak about the impact fee? Hold on a second. When we're going to be holding a public hearing on that with item 12, that would be the appropriate time for you to speak on that. Mike McDonald, are you here for the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take your comments at that time. Steve, are you here for that as well?
278.
I'd like to say good evening to the committee and everybody here. I live in Windmill Harbor, I mean Mariners Cove, and I brought some Mariners Cove people with me, and we want to tell you how much we love the place, living there. We love it, and we support the One Bridge Project, the Two Bridge. When we saw the sketch of the Two Bridge Project, we couldn't believe it. We almost fainted that it would basically knock out some of our buildings and destroy the whole neighborhood. So, I appreciate the county council supporting the One Bridge Project, and we will do anything we can to help support any aspect of that. But it would basically destroy our neighborhood, the Two Bridge Project, because you all saw the picture, and it basically would go over our buildings and tennis court, and it wouldn't be Mariners Cove anymore. So, I just want to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wish to address us on any other matter before we begin the action items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this session and move into our public hearings and action items. There are no matters arising out of executive session.
Committee reports.
Committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the liaison and committee reports. Ms. Howard.
Mr. Chairman, I have three to report on. The Stormwater Board met on-site at the Cypress Wetlands, and we had an education on why that was built and how well it's working in the town of Port Royal. It was very helpful for all the Stormwater Board members to see that up close. Last week, I met with the TCL Board with the rest of the members up at the Hampton Campus where they teach the CDL course, and got to see that campus. And then, on Wednesday this week, the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board meets Wednesday morning.
Thank you.
I have one.
Mr. McKellen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report that the Community Services and Public Safety Committee will be meeting on May 2nd, the first Monday in May, and there will be an agenda meeting to develop an agenda for that meeting on the 2nd, on April 27th, which is this Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, coming out of public facilities, we have four items all passed unanimously. I'd like to use the microphone.
We have four items coming out of public facilities, all of which passed unanimously. One is, there's a 5K race that's going to take place, and they're doing a couple of these at the airports. There's a little bit of money left over, so they want to channel it to an academy that helps young kids get involved in aviation, but we actually have to approve that. It's just a minority. We have three awards. One is for about 1.3 million, which is to do the roof replacement on the main administration building for the county. Second is one for about a quarter of a million dollars, which is replacing some of the cooler and freezer equipment in our detention center. And the last one is about a little less than 300,000 to repair one of our boat landings. All three of those involve money. Are within budget. And one last thing, Mr. Chairman, it's always found over the years, it's always a pleasure to see good people get promoted. So, I just learned a little while ago that our Tiffany, who not too long ago got another degree, is now going to go and be in business administration for public facilities, if I got the right place where she's headed. So, she'll be missed. She's done a great job for us, for all of our committee, but always love to see people moving on, and we wish you Godspeed in that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any others? Okay, then we are at the public hearing and action items. As I said, item number 10, matters arising out of the caucus executive session. We did not have that, so I will seek a member of council to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion.
My second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the second.
Mr. Glover.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Before you move on the consent agenda, the, um, the Altitude Academy that's been, that has been created on St. Helena, I appreciate the funding that's going toward that, and I just want to express to this council that they are in dire need of a lot of resources, and I'm hoping that the county can do a little bit more in helping them along. They're working with 30 to 50 young kids, getting them engaged in aviation, and I think it could serve this community, my community, well if we can just add a little bit more resources to them in the future. Not asking for anything right now, but just keep that in mind. That's all. Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Moving on to item number 12, which is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 82, Articles 2 through, Article 2 through 7 of the Code of Ordinance of Beaufort County to terminate the collection of Parks and Recreation Facility impact fees, road facility impact fees, Southern Beaufort County Service Area road facility impact fees, Northern Beaufort County Service Area library facilities impact fees, fire facility impact fees, and other matters related thereto.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion.
My second, Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. We are going to turn to the public. We have two individuals that wish to make comments. Carolyn Smith will make the first comments.
Is this on?
It's green. Yes, so you go ahead.
Okay. My name is Carolyn Smith, and I've come tonight to speak to y'all as a taxpayer and a landlord, and I've been listening to the past two meetings that you've had about this impact fee, and when something like this is going on, I like to study it and be prepared, but it's been kind of hard to study this when y'all have done this so quickly, and there's been no real public discussion about how you're going to handle it if you take these impact fees away. And I keep thinking y'all are wanting lower housing and everything, so what impact, if you take this impact fee away, what impact is it going to have on the property tax? Then if my property tax goes up, rent's going to go up, everything else is going to go up, and I would like the answer to those two questions, and I just think that y'all have gone into this too fast and too quickly, and that you need to have some kind of plan or something before you go any further with taking this away from Beaufort County, because they, this, there's just so much that it supports, and I don't see how the average taxpayer could turn around and pay what they said that they get from the impact fee.
Council members, good evening, and thank you. I've been a resident in Beaufort County for 43 years, and I've been a licensed builder since 1988, and this is my second time addressing the council about these impact fees. I'm here representing two of my clients, and I'm asking the council to repeal the $9,535 impact fee on new construction. It seems to us to be an unfair tax placed solely on the backs of the people wanting a new home outside of a municipality. Perhaps it was originally aimed at tract developers who could roll the fees into the selling price of a new home. However, it affects people who possibly owned property for a while or inherited property and now have to pay this exorbitant fee. It affects property in established neighborhoods where infrastructure is already in place. However, some of these areas do not have access to public water and sewer. I recently priced a one-bedroom apartment for a client. They wanted to live in it until they could afford to build their new house. The framing package was the only line item higher than the impact fees, and I'm asking you on behalf of other builders in Beaufort County, I've talked to the Home Builders Association, their executive officer, and I think we need to think seriously about reducing or finding another way to gather this money, but to put the impact fees on the back of the unincorporated areas of the county is unfair to potential homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the council moves into discussion on this, is there anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the Citizen Comments on the public hearing portion of this one. Is there, Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion. You get to speak first or amend, however you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About two weeks ago, at our last county council meeting, we originally had the school impact fees and all the other impact fees put together as one motion. We went to separate them last week, so now the school impact fee now is the line item 13, and 12 is the one we're doing right now with fire, library, rec, and et cetera. You're right, it is our job to negotiate. It's our job to get the agreements done with the municipalities, and sometimes it's not easy. Some of these have been going on for years, some of them for months. Some of them are way overdue, but with that said, we can say that meetings have been happening with the municipalities in the county. Our staff's been working their behinds off because we have been doing this quickly for our reasons. We've pushed hard on this to make progress. The biggest reason I've butted heads with people on impact fees is because I do think it should be an equal playing field. I think it should be equal across the county because we're all benefiting from when Hilton Head is successful, Beaufort is successful. You can only do so much on Hilton Head before tourism decides to go spend a day in Beaufort, and they benefit, and so on with the Fusky and Bluffton. We work together, and we need to make sure that we continue to spread that throughout the county. That was one of my big arguments against the school impact fee. With that being said, we have been making progress. I think it's heading in the right direction. The municipalities and the county, we're all willing to negotiate to get these accomplished, and that's going to take a little bit more time. This is the third reading, and that's why today I'm going to move that we postpone it to June 13th at that county council meeting, because that will give us enough time to finish our discussions with the municipalities and see if we can come to agreements, but just know that when it does return to county council on the 13th, it still does return as the third and final vote for that item.
Chairman, I'd like to second.
Okay, duly moved and seconded to move this matter, that it be postponed until June 13th, 2022 council meeting. Is there any other comment, Mr. Cunningham?
Chairman, I did want to comment, because I know it's been moved to table it.
It's not been moved to table it, it's been postponing the action, so you can make any comments about the postponement of the action. That's what we're going to debate now.
Okay, what about the actual motion itself? Can I speak to that at some point?
You can certainly speak to that.
After this or now?
It would be appropriate for you to speak now.
Okay, yeah. I do have some comments I want to make about this general topic, and that's item 12 and 13. As many of you know, most of you know, we had a meeting last week with the municipalities, and... And the first thing I'll say about that meeting is that at least through those mayors or administrator apology, there was a blistering, withering attack leveled at our administrator, I think was extremely inappropriate. In the case of... Well, with Beaufort, I've been discussing, well, we constantly discussing impact fees within over a decade. And I mean, after a few years, it's kind of hard to take it seriously, it becomes a joke at some point. But in any event, we've been talking about this for a lot of years and Parks and Recreation for over a decade. In the case of the school impact fee, I think, and the updated fees that went out in November of two thousand twenty, and the criticism leveled against... A part of the criticism leveled against our administrator was that he hadn't responded to something from one of the town managers in, I don't know, thirty days. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was cruelly disproportionate. I mean, if I ever spoke to a town manager the way at least three of our mayors spoke to our administrator, when I came... When I regained my composure, I'd certainly apologize. Having said that, as you know, I support... Strongly support impact fees because, as one of the speakers said earlier, if we don't collect the impact fees, it's a simple matter, it goes right back on the taxpayers. So as the clock keeps running, every day goes by, every week, every month, that there's that many thousands and ultimately millions of dollars that we're not collecting that are going to go on the back of the taxpayers. So I'm a strong advocate, always have been, always will be, a strong advocate of impact fees. I do believe, I saw some movement, I think, for the municipalities on these impact fees. I hope and pray that what I think I saw as movement will turn into an agreement. The alternative is, if the municipalities want to go their own way, they can assume responsibility for libraries, they can assume responsibility for parks and recreation, they can assume responsibility for roads, and they can do a study and make their own impact fees and worry about it themselves. I don't... Personally, I don't think that's a very practical way to do it. But one way or the other, somebody's got to collect impact fees to offset the costs to our taxpayers, because our taxpayers are burdened enough as it is. I think that's about all I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, so thank you very much.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Rodman?
Yes, I would strongly suggest that we do do the postponement. I do think there's good work going on. And Paul beat me to it, but when I learned about people attacking our administrator, that really bothered me. You know, it's okay to disagree, but people don't have to be disagreeable. And I think Eric does a very wonderful job for us, and I think that was uncalled for if that's what happened.
Ms. Howard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the reason that I seconded both of those motions is that I have faith that the municipalities will work with the county to get these impact fees in place. It has been going on for years, particularly the library fee goes back to the previous library administrator who worked with two of the localities to come to some sort of agreement. And that is why I voted for the post... I will vote for the postponement because I think we can, under the pressure of this timeframe, get it done. Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support the postponement. I guess I really have a question for the administration. Is that... How is the negotiation, or how is the discussion? It's not a negotiation, but how is the discussion between council and the municipalities are going at this time, as well as the school district? I mean, postponing it means that you... There's a hope that conversation is happening and that so that we can move forward with this project?
Well, then, so... Yeah, so let me make sure the record's clear. If you all look at the table there where I'm sitting tonight, you'll see a stack of paper. That is every email that I have sent since two thousand and eighteen to various people on the impact fee study. Most of those are to the municipalities that we've been dealing with. So the discussion on Thursday started the ball rolling. I think if we have this sixty-day period, we can finish this off and get it to a point to where we can bring a proposal back to you all. But I want it to be clear that I can't do that on my own. I have to have some cooperation, I have to have some communication back. I don't have the luxury of being able to spoon-feed and hand people the same documents over and over repeatedly and repeatedly. So... And when I get comments, I have to take time to review those comments and do it appropriately so that we can make sure the impact fees are being handled legally. So those things are in the works now with the city of Beaufort. I've received some communications with Town Hilton Head Island. You know, Yemecy has already signed the IGAs, so they're good to go. So yeah, I think the quick answer to your question is if we have this additional timeframe, approximately sixty days, then I think we can put everything together and bring a proposal back to you all. That will be satisfactory. And if we can't, then you all will know that we've done everything we can, again, during this period, and you all will be free to make whatever decision you have to make to do whatever you need to do with the impact fee issue.
Mr. Hervishan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is it on green?
All right, thank you. Is there any concern, I guess it's a legal question, with having these on the books for another seven weeks, plus or minus?
No.
There is no concern about that at this point. That's no greater than what may exist already.
The question was, is there a concern because we're delaying this seven weeks? Will it have any dramatic impact on what we have to do? And the answer is no.
And I want to make it clear that all you are discussing right now to defer because this is a separate item is the existing impact fees, not the school impact fee.
Correct. Mr. McKellen, comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the meeting where the county administrator and the county managers met with the municipalities, met with the county administrator. However, there seems to be some concerns about recalculating the impact fees and the IGA agreements and stuff like that. And so my concern is if the municipalities have been delaying because of their disagreement with the IGAs and the recalculation of some fees that they're concerned about, have they or have you requested that they share and the consultant doing the recalculation?
Yeah, we've met with the municipalities back in December and went over the recalculation of the fees with them. And all the town managers said, and basically the details out of that meeting with the town managers. Now, I have not met with the mayors, because I want to make it very clear for the record. I have... The communication for me is to the town managers. It's on the town managers to communicate with their mayors, not on me. It's not on me to communicate with the school board. It's on me to communicate with the superintendent of the school board, and I have done that. If they have failed to communicate with their folks, then that's something that the mayors and the school board need to take up with their folks that they hire to run their organization. So in December, we met with them. We gave them the recalculation of the transportation impact fee that included all of their projects. After we had paid the consultant additional twenty-five thousand dollars to recalculate those fees, we said the parks and rec and library fees, those projects can be done with the existing fee. However, the transportation impact fee has jumped substantially. And those managers, and Jared, you nod your head no if you disagree with this, those managers in that room, and also Phil and Chuck, they were in the meeting as well, those managers in that room said, oh, we can't charge that type of money for a transportation impact fee. We're going to need to rework the transportation impact fee. After we had taken time to add their projects to the list and had the fee recalculated, they then said, oh, well, that's too many projects, that's too high of a fee, so we got to go back and redo it again. So we broke it up into north of the broad and south of the broad groups, where Jared would meet with town managers north of the broad, meet with town managers south of the broad, to further refine the project list. And Jared just completed that recently and sent that out to the managers Thursday morning just prior to the meeting. And then they came back after he sent the fee, they came back and said, oh, can we see the project list that these numbers support? We'd already provided them the project list, they were involved in developing the project list, but they sent him an email a couple hours after he sent them the new number, saying, oh, we need to see the project list that these numbers relate to. You know, I don't know how to manage that. If folks aren't going to be responsible with the data they're given, you know, I don't know how to handle that situation, so.
That having been said, Mr. Chairman and the county administrator, I hope that by us postponing this until the June date that is set, that we will be able to work through this stalemate, this disagreement between the mayors and the town managers and actually get them on board to establish the impact fees.
Mr. Lawson?
Thank you, Eric.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Ms. Smith, for coming and speaking. And Mr. McDonald, thank you for coming. And obviously, the school impact fee is going to be separate, and we separated that out last time. Just right now, we're just talking about impact fees for infrastructure for school...
Mark, can you press the button?
It's on, it's green. Can you hear me? I'll bring... I'll slide closer to it. So right now, I voted against us even thinking about repealing the impact fees, and I realized it was a knee-jerk reaction. And now we are, for lack of a better term, trying to strong-arm the municipalities. You know, the town of Bluffton hesitated mostly because of the school impact fee. I think that we are going down slippery slope whenever we sit here and put timelines on things that, again, that need to be done. And again, Eric, I appreciate all that you've done. I think for us even to consider, again, tonight was the third reading, so we made it this far, repealing the impact fees, can you imagine what kind of boom there would be in development if we took away impact fees? You would have every person out there that was going to build a house, every apartment complex, come to us, and whether their plans were done enough, they'd put the permit in. Every grocery store, every... No matter what it was, we would see the biggest boom of development in the short period of time that would repeal it, and it'd take us three meetings to get it back, that would cost the county millions and millions of dollars. Facility we're sitting in, bought with and paid for with impact fees. The library in Bluffton, same thing. The new library is going to go out towards Sun City out on one seventy, impact fees. The new fire station that's over at New Riverside. Burton Wells, and I can just keep going on and on and on throughout the county. So for us to get to this point, I mean, I think that we are adults enough that we can figure out how to make this work and what we need to do. And again, I understand why we're all doing this and up here, but again, I just think it was the wrong way to go about doing it. And again, our citizens actually think that we're going to repeal the impact fees, and I think that's the furthest thing actually from the truth. So I'm still going to vote against it, again, because I did not want for us to move forward with any type of repeal, even though it's a delay that's going forward out of principle, I'm just going to vote against both items tonight.
Mr. Fluehling, your comment?
I didn't have one, Mr. Chairman, but I'll say that I'm for postponing this. I'm not necessarily in favor of removing all the impact fees. The school impact fee is a separate matter, and I'll address that when we consider item number thirteen. But I think it is wholly appropriate for us to delay this for an opportunity to allow the municipalities to catch up and for us to assess the needs of Beaufort County and the county as a whole in protecting the assets that we have. So please vote for the move to delay this.
Thank you. Final comment from me. We had the meeting the other day. We learned some things that we really were lacking in communication about. The appropriateness of an impact fee is a county responsibility. The reason you have an IGA is we cannot collect impact fees in a municipality without their consent. So the IGA is the mechanism whereby we will collect impact fees. The reason we're having trouble with the IGAs is because of some of the interpretations of what they believe should be in an IGA. We have to work through that. They're also concerned about the fact that there is a CIP list, a Capital Improvement Project List, for the collection of those fees that will go to items on that list. They feel that they do not have a seat at the table. And so I believe by postponing the action that we must take at third reading will allow us to hopefully clear up the IGAs, set a meeting whereby the town managers and the mayors will meet with myself and Mr. Greenway. We will hear their priorities for the projects that we can bring back to county council to adopt as part of the impact fee ordinance. So giving a timeline and deadline to accomplish this, I think, is prudent at this time. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Can I make one final comment?
One final comment?
Brief, I promise. Two weeks ago, Mark actually brought that same idea to mind in our meeting about a big boom. And one of the things that we looked at and we talked to Jared about afterwards was the timeframe that it actually takes for that to become accomplished, for an apartment complex to come in and get approved. It's got to go through planning and multiple stages before it can even apply for permits. Same thing with the grocery stores. So we're talking six months to a year before that happens. With that also being said, let's say this, Lord willing, doesn't get drug out that long, I guarantee you a municipality would pull together an impact fee real quick before that gets approved. I know on our end, we would make sure that we could take care of that as well, because it'd be a huge disservice to the county. But we do have to level the playing field. We need to get this equivalent across the board. It is a strong stance to take, but some of these have been going on for decades. That would be when I was still in high school. We got to get some of these things accomplished.
Okay, Mr. Cunningham, on the amendment, you vote first.
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Fluehling?
Yes.
Mr. Somerville?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and there are ten yes, one no. The motion to postpone until June thirteenth of two thousand twenty-two for this public hearing and third reading has passed. Moving on to the next item, item number thirteen, is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to repeal chapter eighty-two, article eight of the Code of Ordinance of Beaufort County to terminate the collection of school development impact fees and to refund the impact fees already paid and other matters thereto. May I have such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Mr. Fluehling, did you make the second?
I did.
Okay, let me go to the audience first. Is there any person in the audience wishes to address us on the school impact fee? Is there any person in the audience wishes to address us on the school impact fee? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Come forward, sir.
Actually, I might have been supposed to talk about number 13, but I have a question. Can I ask a question to the council?
You can ask a question.
We touched the button.
Make sure it's on green, please. Yeah, it is.
With any of these impact fees, if the municipalities sign on, will the impact fees to the other parts of the county go down? Will it all, we talked about level the playing field, will that be part of it?
Well, once we calculate all of the impact fees again.
Yes.
It will determine exactly what they are for the various impact that they are having. So each fire district will have an impact fee, each road impact fee, library impact fee will depend upon the municipality.
Okay.
And the projects within that municipality, that's how they are calculated.
So it just won't be as broad as the?
No.
Be more specific as to where it's located?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think there was some confusion on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Did I state anything incorrectly, Mr. Greenway?
No, sir, you did, you did well. I mean, the, the impact fees, a good thing, keep in mind for those in the room and those watching on TV, impact fees are about proportional share. Everybody must pay a proportional share for the impact that they're having for infrastructure in the county. So if municipalities do not sign on to the collection of the impact fees, then that creates a, that throws the proportional share apart out of balance for impact fees.
Right.
And it makes the need for additional avalorm taxes or additional referendums and bonds to do those things that were originally accounted for for the impact fee necessary more quickly. So people that are paying the impact fees may also be hit with a significant higher bill because they paid the impact fee and municipalities did not pay the impact fee, but then bonding and avalorm taxes have to go up on those folks that paid the impact fee as well to cover the lack of, a lack of towns paying the impact fee, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so it's imperative that the municipalities get on board with this and level the playing field.
The more, the more that we have to spread that proportional share out over a wider area, the better it is for everyone. Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion, therefore you get to speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, not to repeat myself too much, but the school impact fee came to us this summer. I voted against it all three readings for multiple reasons. I don't like the way it's written. I do think $9,500 to every household just defeated every single purpose that we had for affordable housing and workforce housing. The biggest discussion I've heard from the municipalities is, we'll agree to it, but we want lower impact fees based on the value of the home, and the difference has to be paid for by the county. That can go by millions very, very quickly, which still comes back to the tax base that's going to have to pay. So it's completely repetitive. This one, we had to separate because we have a lot of different feelings on council on this. I'm sure it's going to be a lot tighter vote. With that also being said, there has been no indication of movement. The biggest boom is right here in my district in Bluffton. The town of Bluffton does not seem eager to sign this for multiple reasons, and those are their reasons. We have reasons why we're pushing for things, they have reasons why they decided not to. Completely understandable on both sides to have those opinions, like there's, there's no ill will. We just couldn't come to an agreement on this one, and for that, I am going to support for the removal of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fluehling, you made the second, so you get to speak now.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I won't belabor the point as well, so I won't talk about the rightness of collecting a school impact fee. I'll talk about the timing of it. I just think that it is unfair, places Beaufort County and our citizens, predominantly my constituents, the unincorporated area north of the Broad River, primarily, not exclusively, but primarily, it places them in a significant disadvantage to the very neighbors, people right across the creek from them who are in the town of Bluffton, who don't have to pay it. It is fundamentally unfair. And until we get to a point where the town of Bluffton and town of Hilton Head and all the other municipalities have signed on to the school impact fees, it really is just unfair, and we need to do right by our citizens and repeal this. When the matter comes again before county council, to when the municipalities have signed the IGA and agreed to start collecting school impact fees, then I'll talk about any philosophical opposition I may have to collections, but that's not today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Somerville? You're still on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I support the, I do not support eliminating the school impact fee. I've always been an advocate for school impact fees. I'm glad that earlier in this meeting, we heard from some of the folks in the fire districts talking about how critical, not just important, but critical, the impact fee is to them. You heard all of the different things that I think Mr. Cunningham or somebody mentioned, all the things that have been built by impact fees. Schools are no different. The only difference is they're more expensive, a lot more expensive. But the school district has just what passed a $350 million bond referendum a year or so ago, and it's not going to be long before they're going to have to come out and do it again and again and again. Impact fees are not designed to pay for all of the schools, they're designed to pay for the impact that the new development has on the school. So it's, but it's still a critical amount of money. I'm absolutely going to support keeping the impact fee. We've struggled for years trying to come up with some way to generate some capital money for the schools. Before they were legal, we came up with a capital, a capital fee that we could, we could fold into development agreements, and then, of course, that didn't work out very well. But we now have an opportunity to get, get some real money through these impact fees, and I'm strongly, strongly going to support it. I know that the school board is listening, they, I've spoken today with several members of the school board, and they, they explain, they need this money for the, for the schools they're going to have to build. And of course, it's mostly in Bluffton or the Bluffton area. I absolutely agree with Mr. Fluehling and anybody else that says it's not fair that we charge it in the, in the unincorporated areas and not in the incorporated areas. I do agree with that. I think long term, that can't work. But I've, I've heard some things from the mayor of Bluffton in the last few months that sound like that they're maybe going to sign it. I know one of the things that they constantly express concern about is, is affordable housing. Well, we, we passed an ordinance, we have committed ourselves as a county to pay 100% of the impact fees for all, all houses that are 60% of AMI. And then, of course, it reduces after that, but we have no idea how much money that could be. We've committed ourselves to an unknown liability, which could be huge, but I don't ever hear us getting credit for that. All I hear about is, well, what about affordable housing? What about affordable housing? Well, we've already passed an ordinance to deal with affordable housing, and we've put the county taxpayers on the hook for who knows how much money. It could be a really, really big number. So I, I'm going to say at this point, I think reference to the, to the affordable housing is kind of a red herring. We've dealt with that. And I'm hoping that, that I heard the mayor correctly in the things that she said, that they're, they're already assigned the impact fee. I know that at one point, they wanted to move the goalposts a little bit from 60 to 80% of AMI, and I think we corresponded with them, our administrator or, or county, our chairman corresponded with them and said, look, if you want to go to 80, you can pick up the difference, that's fine with us. We're on the hook for 60 and then a proportion after that. So that's just, those are just, those are just mathematical issues. But I'm, I remain optimistic that the town of Bluffton is going to lead the way to sign the, the IGA or some version of it, some modified version of it, and that'll, and that'll bring Hilton Head hopefully and, and Hardyville in as well. Thank you.
Mr. Hervishan? Any comments? Mr. Glover?
Yes, I'm going back to the administration again. The impact fee that we are about to repeal deals with the school district south of the Broad, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that impact fee is the new amount that has been determined for, that fee, which is what, about $9,000?
So $9,500 for single family residents and $4,500 per multifamily unit.
Okay. And the old impact fee was what figure?
For schools, zero. There was no school impact fee until last fall.
Oh, okay.
For schools.
Communication with the school district superintendent, how is that coming? Or is it coming?
I sent, I got a, I got some pushback from municipalities, but whenever you all voted to do first reading or repeal the school impact fee and all the other impact fees, I sent an email to all the town managers and to Dr. Rodriguez and to the fire chief, and Chief Thompson can back me up on this, saying, hey, this is what the county council has done. If you all want to preserve your impact fees, then I would suggest you start doing what you need to do with regards to communications, to try to preserve your right to keep these impact fees in place. We are here at the public hearing for the repeal of the school impact fee, and no one from the school district, either the board or otherwise, is here to ask you all to keep the fee intact. I saw a member of the school board in Planet Fitness about a week and a half ago coming out, and I mentioned to him where they had been on the school impact fee, and he had indicated to me that as finance chair, he would be here the next time this issue was taken up. I don't know what happened, but I have reached out to them, I've tried to communicate to them to let them know what's happening, but they seem to be more concerned, the school district and the municipalities seem to be more concerned that I didn't call them to let them know that we, a lawsuit regarding the school impact fee had been filed against us, that they have absolutely nothing to do with. So over fighting for the school impact fee.
Thank you.
Ms. Howard?
I have a question regarding that lawsuit. If, what, what jeopardy is the county in if, at this point in time, if we continue to collect the school impact fees in the unincorporated and the town of Bluffton does not?
Well, I mean, I think, so I don't know the nature of that lawsuit, and I don't want to tell you a lot about this in open session.
I understand.
But I think the fact that, again, impact fees are based and predicated on proportional share, and the municipalities in the Southern Beaufort County service area for schools were included in that impact fee study, the credit was given for the referendum that was approved. So with all of that being taken into consideration and those residents being included in the calculation for proportional share and the fact that they're not paying that, then I think that someone could argue that the proportional share test may not be be a map.
And how long have we been collecting them? Could you?
I think since, I think since the fall of '21.
Fall of '21. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to comment that it's.
Midsummer.
Oh, midsummer of '21?
Yes.
So I'm, almost a year, well, coming up on a year. I, I'm, I know it's not, it is not fair to Councilman Fluehling and Councilman Somerville's point that the town of Bluffton is not collecting them, but I find it very difficult to vote not to collect school impact fees. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, a couple things, Mr. Chairman. I view the schools a little bit different than the other items that we have impact fees for, because most of those are kind of county related. And I was talking to the school folks on a different issue, they brought it up. I said the same kind of things that you were saying, they didn't participate. They viewed that it was dead from their perspective anyway. And clearly, I think you've made the case that they haven't stepped forward to help us and bear the cost or to argue with the municipalities on what ought to happen. Now, I view the schools a little bit different also in the sense that if you, if you look at the libraries and everything else, it's not a lot of other ways to do it. It's either impact fees or avalorm taxes. The school district has a, another mechanism, which is really the preferred way to do it. And that is, when you want to build five new schools, you go to the voters and you say, here are the five schools we want to build, here's where they're located, here's what they're going to look like, here's what the attendance zones are, and they have to sell the public on what they want to do. Collecting a relatively small amount of money doesn't go an awful far to build very, very expensive schools. So what you end up with is you end up doing both. You've got a portion of the people paying the 9,500, and frankly, I think it's double taxation, because then, when they need to build the schools, they don't have enough money to do it, then they have to come back and get a referendum passed. And so the people who paid, bought, you know, build a new home, paid the fee, they get, they get double taxed. Now, relative to the calculation, my understanding was that the money that was calculated for the impact fees was under the assumption that Bluffton and Hilton Head were coming in. If they don't come in and we still collected the fee, then we would have to raise it even more. Now, my understanding of the, the Bluffton portion of it was that they were looking for various conditions and exceptions. And I think Paul touched on part of that, but whereas maybe you start waiving that for certain groups. I, I think the problem with that is, what we did not too long ago is we said, look, if we're going to waive fees, we actually can't waive them, the most we can do is replace them. And so we actually raised money from taxpayers and put that money in when we, we waive a, waive a fee. So for us to be doing that for the school district to the tune of the 9,500 seems to is way overreaching. I would also say that I truly believe that we've, we're trying the best we can to make things affordable. And one of the groups that we're most concerned about is the teachers. And this flies absolutely directly in the face of, of that whole thing. We're saying we're having trouble recruiting teachers because of cost, but by the way, we're going to increase the cost of what you're going to, you're going to pay when you get here. So I think this is totally different than all of the other fees, and I think that we're, we need to retire this. And I was also a little disappointed that I think if I read the paper correctly, they were a little bit critical of us in the newspaper, too. I don't know, they were the ones attacking you, or just attacking us as a body, but if I read it correctly, they also criticized us. Anyway, that's, that's my opinion, and I will suggest that we do not need to continue this particular one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen?
I'm ready to vote.
So let me, if I may, Chairman, before you make your comment, make sure everyone for the record is clear on what will happen if this passes tonight. We will begin the process of refunding to everyone that paid an impact fee, their impact fees, based on a first in, first out line of order. So those that paid it first will get their money first. In addition to that, I made a statement at last council meeting that the money would go to the person that paid the impact fee. That is not consistent with the state statute, so I need to correct that. The money will go to the property owner, and it'll be up to anyone that disputes that to deal with that on a private civil matter, not with the county. So first in, first out on the refunds, the money will be refunded to the property owner of record, and that's the way we will do this if you all are successful on repealing this tonight. Thank you all very much.
I have two more council members. Mr. Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we look at the, when we look at the future growth of the county, the town of Bluffton is less than 50% built out, and so most of that growth is going to take place south of the Broad in the town of Bluffton. And when that happens, the impact is going to require them to build additional schools. And with them not paying. And with them not paying uh or collecting impact fees, then uh the, the rest of the folks in the unincorporated, unincorporated area of the county, then will, will have to pick up that, that, that burden. And so I'm going to vote for the motion to repeal the school impact fees until the municipalities come on board and actually institute collection of impact fees.
And Mr. Lawson?
Yes, thank you. Um and the, the reason we're here right now is in two thousand seventeen, I think the state legislature passed a law that allowed us to start collecting school impact fees. Before that, it was all the other impact fees that we were talking about earlier in the last ordinance. So um whenever I came on council, um this was something that was already started by the previous council and I, and I did support it. And the reason I support it was because we all that Bluffton has continued to grow and we continue to need to build schools. We're at seventy, eighty and ninety percent capacity uh here in Bluffton. Whenever Hilton Head is at sixty and the Northern Beaufort County is at, at fifty percent in some of their schools. So it was a need that I thought that, that we should have and looked to support uh the school board uh to try to um uh raise more money for, for what's needed here. And since that time, uh in the, the last reading that I changed my mind and have decided to vote against the school um impact fee and, and due to the fact that those areas I mentioned north of Abroad weren't going to have to pay it. Hilton Head doesn't need it as well. Their school was not at a capacity that they needed. So it was going to be only the unincorporated areas, north of Abroad. Um and then if Bluffton came on, Bluffton will be paying it, which um as Mr. McDonald, you've now stated, um it is completely unfair that we look at a ninety-five hundred dollar charge um for every home, forty-five hundred dollars for every um uh a, a multi-unit um development to, to have to pay those impact fees whenever the northern part of the county does not pay, Hilton Head was not going to pay. So again, um uh at, at this point, um yes, I have changed my mind on this. And again, it's due to the fact that if we're going to do this in the future, I think it needs to be brought to us by the school board and not by our um initiative, which is what, what's happened here. We're doing it, trying to help the school board out, which they've got their own council, their own school board and their own funding and all those things there. So uh if they would like to do this in the future, I am all ears. Uh would need their support, them to go out and actually uh pitch this and sell this to the municipalities. But again, at this point, without the support of the school board, um and again, seeing what it has done to the, the stories that I've heard in Bluffton, then I will vote uh against the uh school impact fee.
Okay, uh Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion. You get to vote first.
Mr. Chairman.
Before we, before we vote, um just want to make sure uh I'm, I am clear. Um I lost my chain of thoughts, but um it'll come back to me in a few minutes. Before the impact fee for the school district, there was no impact fee at all. The only access they had to funding was in the infrastructure money that we collected in impact fees, right? For roads improvement, et cetera, et cetera, if they put a facility in that, in that, in that area.
The only way the uh infrastructure money would have benefited a school in that way would be that if we had a road that needed to be improved already on our project list and they built a school where that road is located. So rarely did that happen. So yeah, so you couldn't, up until a few years ago, you could not have a school impact fee. I was the planning director in York County and we adopted a school impact fee. And because we adopted a school impact fee, uh the state legislature shortly thereafter moved to um make the adoption of new school impact fees illegal for local governments. That changed um a few years ago. We hired a, we worked with the, we worked with the school district to hire a consultant who is a premier consultant, Tishler Bice. They do these things all across the country. They did the school impact fee study and they did our studies to update our fee on the infrastructure elements. Roads, parks and rec, libraries, um fire. And then we asked them to do two additional studies for new impact fees for EMS and solid waste.
And so today we are advocating impact fees for the school district and they're not at the table.
Yeah, so, so let me, let me elaborate a little bit on, on how that might have happened.
Okay.
We were at the time that I recommended that you all go ahead and adopt the school impact fee, we're facing a couple of annexations by the town of Hardyville. So the state statute says that if you have an impact fee in place and a town annexes a property with those impact fees in place, then they either have to ensure that the fees are correct, collected, or they have to provide the service. So I recommended to you all that we go ahead and adopt the school impact fee to get that in place so that if that, if those annexations did indeed occur, that we would have the school impact fee in place to make sure that we preserved our right to collect those impact fees in those towns that were annexed. Whether we had IGAs or not. So the IGAs didn't happen. There's been plenty of reasons why, to Councilmember Cunningham's point. Everybody has their reasons for not doing it. There are legitimate reasons uh to not do it by all those jurisdictions. But the time has come now for us to, as a county, to stop collecting it because again, we don't have the school board here pushing for it. We don't have the superintendent here pushing for it and that's fine. If they made that decision not to do that, that's fine, but we don't need to continue to collect it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Cunningham, you vote first. This is to eliminate the school impact fee.
Yes.
Mr. Floeling?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Uh based on what I've heard, yes.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Somerville?
No.
Chair votes yes, so we have nine yes, two no. That item passes. We're at the first reading of an ordinance to allocate two thousand eighteen one-cent sales tax additional revenue to the sidewalk and multi-use pathways programs in the amount of fifteen million four hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. May I have a motion?
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Floeling made the motion. Ms. Howard made the second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. You can answer it from there. Does this include the matter I discussed with you earlier today with regard to pathway on Burnt Church Road?
We have pathway on Burnt Church. We have path, pathway on Burnt Church Road. Um and this would, we're moving forward with the design on that project. Um but the, that will be part of a road project, a widening project. So this would not include um the construction of that as that'll be part of the road project.
And what, what's the, um, all right, I can talk to you about that later. So this would not include a installation of a pathway on Burnt Church, but that pathway is being considered with regard to another project that's pending or already approved?
It's, it's already approved for design, but not approved on construction yet.
What's the timeframe?
Um we're working on design right now for about twelve months or so and then construction will be coming forward from there.
Is there any reason not to put it in with the other fifteen million dollars?
Well, as far as the design, it's, it's included in the road design. Whether we want to construct it separate from the road construction, that could be determined, but the layout would be pending the road construction. So we're not putting it in the wrong place and moving it twice.
Separating, separating it out is not going to cause it to happen any faster.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question.
Uh Mr. Hervishan asked next?
Thank you. Um I generally support the project list. However, given that the referendum said not to exceed a hundred and twenty million, isn't it incumbent upon us to basically return those dollars to the taxpayers?
No.
That's a great question.
So basically, the state statute on, on collection of sales tax states that if any excess uh sales tax is collected between the time we reach the point in the end of that quarter, then that overage needs to be spent on um projects.
Thank you.
Projects on the referendum.
Do what now?
Projects on the referendum.
Projects on the referendum, yes, yes.
Ms. Howard?
I'm not familiar with this because it's not in my district, but I have been asked about it. Joe Frazier Road, the status? Joe Frazier Road. It's out near, it's out near Habersham and, between Habersham and Laurel Bay.
I think that's in Councilmember Dawson's district, I believe.
Yeah, I'll have to check on the status of that one. Uh um first, this would be the prioritization of the one, the fourteen, those that were in encumbered. Um so I'll get you an answer to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Radman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I'm sensitive to the time. I'm in favor of doing this, but I'm not convinced yet that we should put a hundred percent of it into the trails and pathways. And here's, here's my, my thought on it. I, I was probably very early on was one who said that we, we missed um the ability to do all of the ones that were on the referendum. And the failure to put some additional money, even if it came out of other pockets, uh would hinder our chances to do future referendums. So I'm in favor of putting some money into the trails. However, um you know, we put thirty million into the Ladies Island variety of road projects. Those, as I understand it, are going to require some more money. We had the eighty million that came from the referendum for the two seventy-eight quarter. Of course, we have other funding sources there. But conventional wisdom is that we're going to need some more money there. And um when you, when you look at the projects that were recommended by the, the towns consultants, the vast majority of those, there's no disagreement on. There's a couple of those that may require a little, little bit of money. And uh some of them are falling in the area of beautification, which no different than what was done with the trails. There was an absolute promise that it would not be just a regular interstate type of bridge, but it would be a very uh nice arrival experience. So I'm, I'm going to vote for this so that we move it forward. But I do think it would be appropriate for the administration to give us a bit of an overview at second reading as to where we are on the other projects and whether we should allocate some money. So I, I guess my sense is if the other projects have some needs, do we really need to take something that was on the ballot that was ten million and make it twenty-five million at the uh eliminating what everybody else paid um and were promised uh and paid for across the county?
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Lawson?
Just real quick to layer, first thing to bring up Burnt Church Road, which is out my way and that was one of the biggest priority um at the time.
I got the, my mic on and I will say thank you for bringing up Burnt Church Road because I think that was um the number one of all pathways on that list. And uh we could go ahead and do Burnt Church Road, as they mentioned. However, with the widening, they just come back in and rip it right back up again. So um that's, that is a road that definitely is needed because of MC Rowley School there, all the connecting roads in there. So, so again, it will be completed. It might take a bit longer, but it is on the schedule and, and is expected to, to happen.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with any of that, but I think there's a, a knowledge vacuum here. And I think it's important that somebody, um you know, PIL might be the perfect selection to just inform the people in that community exactly what Mr. Lawson was referring to because at the moment, there's a void and a great wonder about what's happening. So that would be very helpful and I think.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get a communication out and I'll reach out directly.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that.
Uh let, let me just uh say one thing for council's benefit regarding um uh Councilmember Rodman's comment. Uh one, I don't think I know enough at this point to know what the cost of the things on two seventy-eight is going to be. Um I would encourage you that uh everyone that I've talked to regarding two seventy-eight, uh elected officials at the state level, uh at DOT, they understand that these enhancements are going to cost additional money. I would just, I would just ask that we, you know, trust that process, that we're going to be okay, that whenever we get to the end of two seventy-eight and we need this money, that we're going to be able to find the funding and not tie second reading to me doing something that would just be a shot in the dark uh at this point on what that might look like from a cost standpoint. Because I don't even know when the project, I don't even know when the bridge project is going to begin at this point from a construction standpoint or what the cost will be at that point.
Maybe a simple way to do it is I remember from the recommendations, there were four or five items that clearly required some money, but not a lot. For example, the bump outs and making the trail across the bridge wider and doing the bump outs.
We're covered, we're covering that with the current project funding.
Yeah.
Uh but to your point, you know, we're going to be, you know, you all are going to be hearing a referendum recommendation here shortly uh that may include money to do those additional enhancements as well. So.
Okay, Mr. Chairman? If I, if I might, um it's great that we have a fifteen million dollar um surplus or um or additional funds from the ones in sale tax. And that would afford us to do, to cover some of the sidewalk projects that the initial ten million dollars didn't cover. And, and I think for us to not use that, those uh funds to cover the uh, the additional sidewalks, I, I think would be a grave mistake on our behalf. There's a lot of angry people out there at this very moment who are upset over the fact that uh uh we put forth twenty-four projects and the ten million dollars didn't even cover the, the fourteen projects that we prioritized. And so with this additional funds, I would, I would encourage council to support uh using this additional fifteen million dollars to uh use it on sidewalks um uh for the purpose of showing uh the citizens of this county that uh they are not forgotten, uh they're not being neglected. And um these funds uh will probably never uh come again. So while we have it, I would encourage us to use it for, for the sidewalks.
Okay, is there anyone who wants me to call the roll or will we say that we are going to move first reading without objection?
Without objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, without objection, the first reading is approved and I see no objections. That takes us to item fifteen is approval of a resolution to accept grant funding available through the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission for Beaufort Executive Airport Emergency Generator.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Uh Mr. Hervishan said first and Mr. Floeling was second. Uh any dis-
Hey, without objection, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? If not, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. We're at the second citizen comments. Is there any member of the citizenry who wishes to comment? Please state your name, Anna Marie Tabernick. Make sure that's on green.
Anna Maria Tabernick, I apologize for being late. I was tied up with. Yeah, me, there we go. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Lawson said about the libraries. I am the current chair of the Beaufort County.
Just hit it once, so it stays green.
I'm the current chair of the Beaufort County Library Board of Trustees. We have benefited greatly from impact fees. And as he noted, we recently redid the children's room at Bluffton Library. It's stellar. I'd put it up to any library around here. We are also looking to use impact fees to create another branch, as Mr. Lawson said, in the Pritchardville area along one seventy. So impact fees are very important to the library. I hope you continue them. Thank you. Oh, and as a Sun City board member, I appreciate Chief Thompson. Oh, and as a Sun City board member, I appreciate Chief Thompson, because we're looking to have a fire station in Sun City. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all business has been conducted, and we are adjourned.